The building contract is a surgery. Contractor block. They were the driver. Build up here still.
Not probably. I think it was happy with you. Happy with you.
Try to form the contract. Why? She cares. Back.
That's not giving you that.
That's important.
There's no that man has a really bad sprain like with the head of a right hand is my mom in hand.
That was super. Try to take it.
Wouldn't be a mark.
It would better. The camera. So. They didn't install me Cincinnati. So. Really?
Yeah, Cincinnati.
Hmm. I don't know. Part of it. Kevin goes. It's kind of hard to do that for. He's still here, so. Right. I'm hoping that.
I'm so bad since then.
For the tractor here. Yeah. For the paper stuff. Sit down, man. I need to sit here, buddy.
Okay.
Well, there's one in the meeting. CPA. Well, the CPA. On the primary. So. Yeah, that's from the. That's a topic. For a racial. Parody.
It's free.
Number. So the old baby.
No.
It's freezing.
Yeah, but what's freezing last night?
Fucking. Doesn't seem like it. It's cold. I don't know if this is air or just nothing. This should be soon crash. You guys remember the past. Oh, must be a broken link. See.
What was that?
Research. Research.
To wear a sweater. You know, I thought about James and should I leave my coat today? That's why I. I'm sixty five. I'm sixty six. It's crazy. Yeah, it's definitely. It's a long. Oh, wait. Yep.
I was worried. I was like.
Okay. Wait, we lost our director. Hmm?
Very soon the shiny.
Yeah, just kidding. Yeah, Bri- Brian, Brian's not coming. All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the few minutes late. The time set for the regular September meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask everybody up here to introduce themselves, starting down here.
Wonderful. My name is Meg Truba. I'm the new Director of Economic Development here for the City of Royal Oak. So working with the planning and building departments and all over economic development strategically for the city.
Joseph Murphy, Director of Planning.
Josh Markham, City Attorney's Office.
Woody Gantina.
Jim Ellison.
Mike Fournier, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh. Apparently you have to.
Well, I'm Carly Fournier.
He's looking at rational or rational numbers or equations right now for homework. So I'm, I'm a, just as out of morbid curiosity, I'm riding solo tonight with my kids. So I did not plan accordingly for my wife's schedule tonight, and now we're.
It's a test, Mike. I'm going to do is passage.
All right, then I'm Gary Casada, the Chairperson. So the meeting is called Order, and the first order of business, whoops, I believe it's the meeting minutes for the meeting from August 12th, 2025. Have the Commissioners had a look at these? Do they have any comments, corrections, questions, or motions?
I have not been able to draw them up yet, so I don't know. What they say. We have a broken link. You guys, were you guys able to get them up? Oh, I'm sorry. I haven't been able to draw the minutes up to read them because I think we got a broken link. So if we could wait till next month or fix the link right now.
Oh, you, you can't get them either?
I can't get them up.
I can't get them either.
Doesn't look.
Doesn't look like they're added as an attachment.
Okay, I was able to get them, but they weren't. Okay, so what do we do? Can we, can we postpone that till next meeting?
Postpone the use till next month.
I'd second that.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone the approval of meetings for August 12th until next month. Second, who made the motion?
Motion second.
Motion by Ellison, second by Gantina. Is there discussion of the motion? All right, I'm going to call for the voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Motion passes and we'll fix the glitch and get those taken care of next month. All right, next order of business is public comment. If there are people in the audience who'd like to come up and speak on a non-agenda item, then now it's time to come up. Introduce yourself, and you have three minutes. Anybody would like to come up? Come on up.
It has to be a non-agenda.
That's, yes, this, because if it's an agenda item, you'd have a chance to speak at the time we discuss it.
Okay. Janice Wegman. So we got, in regards to the off-street parking discussion that you're going to be doing on the agenda later. While the analysis presented includes a useful history of ordinance requirements and current compliance rates, it overlooks several critical considerations that should inform any recommendations moving forward. Number one, parking spillover effects. Has there been a measurable spillover onto adjoining properties, nearby lots or structures, and surrounding streets as a result of reduced parking requirements and granted variances? Past approvals should not automatically be assumed successful without evaluating their actual impact. Number two, household vehicle ownership. The vast majority of Royal Oak households own more than one vehicle. How does this correlate with where they live? And is this, this data is key to understanding current and future parking demand. Number three, vehicle counts by unit type. What is the, what is the average number of vehicles per unit for existing multifamily developments? Broken down by studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Without this baseline, it's difficult to accurately predict the impact of further reductions. Number four, transit limitations versus parking needs. While remote work has grown significantly, commuting patterns in Royal Oak remain heavily car-dependent. Ninety-six percent of commuters still drive to work, while public transit usage has declined to just 0.3%. Other cities reducing parking minimums may have stronger transit infrastructure, more favorable climates, and populations inclined toward public transit. Royal Oak obviously, at this point, does not. These factors should be incorporated into the further research and analysis recommended by staff before making any decisions on changing off-street parking requirements. Without this context, we risk adopting policies that may not serve Royal Oak's unique needs. Thank you for considering these points as you evaluate the next steps. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Bill Harrison, Woodward Side Subdivision. Instead of talking about parking, I'll add a second to what Janice said. The presentation of the Form-Based Code by the consultant from California was useless. Much of what he said was redundant. He did not provide a clear explanation as to how the Form-Based Code differs from traditional zoning. He kept referring to alleys. We do not want alleys in single-family residential areas. The alleys in Detroit are a mess. They are neglected and high maintenance. With alleys, houses are jammed together, whereas driveways and side yard setbacks provide at least fifteen feet of separation between dwellings. What we want to know is how the middle, missing middle in ADUs and the new designation Neighborhood Residential are going to affect our single-family neighborhoods, specifically any change in the types of dwellings and parking. During the development of the master plan, there was a constant mantra that this is a master plan, not zoning. You avoided informing the residents that the master plan would be the basis for zoning. This was disingenuous and divisive. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the public like to come up and speak? On a non-agenda item. Okay, hearing, seeing done, I'm going to close the public comment, and we're going to go to item, the next item on the agenda, which is unfinished business. Mr. Murphy.
We do have representatives from Kroger here tonight. I think they would like to provide you some comments based on your, your comments from last month, requesting them to identify a timeline for coming back to you with something for you to consider for the future.
Okay, so I just, I'm clear about this. So there's a request to postpone, and the petitioner is going to explain their request.
Yes.
Okay, so should we bring, if there are representatives from the petitioner, come on up and tell us about your request.
Yeah, thank you. Mike McPherson with Atwell, the civil engineering consultant for the project. As noted, you know, we're requesting to further postpone any action on this particular item. You know, we were before you, a month or a month and a half ago, understand that there was many comments, and we took all those comments in and are trying to not only address those comments as they pertain to the Kroger development, but also work with the current landowner who is a developer to try to bring additional development to the back portion of the property that would be more in line with the future land use plan. So to vet that out, it's just taking a little bit of time to make sure that's something that would be feasible. Thus, we're asking for postponement. We would hope to have something updated and back into you guys in a month or less.
So a month or less? Does that translate to coming back in October or, or later?
Well, I, well, my guess is probably later. We would probably submit revised plans in two to four weeks, and I would assume those would take a little bit of review time, which would probably put us into November for any meetings.
All right. You confident with November?
As confident as we can be. You know, like I say, that, that back portion is being vetted for additional use. Yeah, we've got to make sure that it's a feasible use, that it economically would work. That's something that the developers, property owners are working on now. Assuming that the answer is yes, then November would be an accurate yes.
All right, are there questions for the petitioner?
It's actually for Mr. Markham. Do, if we were to entertain postponement, are we required to postpone to a date certain?
Yes, under Robert's rules of order, if you try to postpone something indefinitely, it has the effect of killing the agenda item, which would, since we currently have an open hearing, since we currently have an open hearing from, I believe, August, it's already conducted public comment. If the agenda item doesn't move forward with a specific date, we would have to be, it'd have to be re-noticed and reopened as a new hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with a, any question for the petitioner? All right, so at this point, we have a request to postpone this agenda item to November. If there's no other questions for the petitioner, then we would look to you guys to discuss it and come up with a motion one way or the other. And there's only three people there who can make a motion.
I move for the requested postponement.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fournier. Is there discussion?
I'll just say, I mean, if you're confident in November timeframe, this is your right, your petition, your business, your knowledge. You know, I, I'm fine with November. What I want to get away from is every month, like if we, you know what I mean? So, you know, the expectation, I think, at least on my end, I can't speak for my colleagues, is let's, let's see a home run here.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're shooting for. You know, hopefully something that is much different than what we presented before and more in line with the future land use plan. And we'll certainly work with, you know, staff and the city here in the next few weeks as well as we further develop this, just to make sure that, you know, everybody is, is in communication with each other.
Perfect. Mr. Chairman? Yes. Can I modify my motion to add that this is the last postponement?
I suppose, what's the rule on that? Well, you can make a, because there is a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the table. All I want to do is.
But logically, if it comes back in November and they want another postponement, then you would just deny that moving forward, right? So that would affect the same effect, so you don't have to.
You start the process over again.
Right, so you could wait till November to make that motion if you wanted to.
Well, no, I'm, what I'm trying to do is give a heads up, is this your last bite of the apple?
Okay, but, but we already have a motion on the table, so you.
I asked if there was a way to modify my motion.
And I asked him.
Okay, then that's fine.
This is his.
My motion, my motion stands as stated.
Okay, you didn't ask anything about construction. You asked about, okay, all right, so is there?
I just want to concur with Mayor. I think it's totally appropriate to give the applicant additional time as they've expressed an interest in responding to the comments that were made previously. But I agree with Mr. Ellison in the sense that I'm not interested in having this discussion beyond the November meeting because I don't want to set the precedent that we're willing to entertain projects to be on the agenda regularly, not be ready, and have to postpone them regularly. So I think it's totally appropriate that they're asking for more time because they, again, it looks like they want to respond to comments, but I guess I want to be clear on the record that I'm not interested in postponing this past November either.
Right, well, I'm going to make a comment if I can just, I missed the, I wasn't here on August 12th when I was. I did, I did watch the video, and I, I don't know if this is a proper thing to say or not, but we've had other, this is a, this is a major piece of property at a very important location, and we've had other occasions where this sort of a project, we ended up having a working group before they got this far. They, they came on August 12th, and there's all sorts of issues. If you remember for the Woodward and Thirteen Mile for Beaumont, and I think for the Hyatt, this was, there were, there was a working group that, that met beforehand. Is this something that, we can't go back in time for this project, but in the future, when other significant properties with major developments come before, is there some way we can signal to the developer community that they ought to have a working group with us ahead of time so we don't go through this?
It's possible. We'd have to go back and look at those prior instances that you referenced and what is, what we can legally do under the State Act. So we can look at that. Depends on the size and scale of projects. Sometimes even the smallest projects take.
Well, if it's significant, yeah.
Going back and forth and back.
But I think, I think the point I'm making is that this is a condition, that the chosen mechanism here is conditional rezoning. So it's supposed to be, they show up, here's my offer. And for, for them to show up and begin in this back and forth that extends over time, and it seems like, it seems like it would have been more efficient to have a working group ahead of time. That's my point.
That's not what they chose.
Okay, but did, did, I just, my, my question is, did, did, does the developer community know that, that they can come to Joe and say, hey, can we have, can we have a working group?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, are there any other comments from staff, councilor, Commissioners before we call for the vote? Okay, the vote, as stated, is to postpone this agenda item to November. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, we'll see you in November.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, next order of business. This is the, other business is analysis of the zoning ordinance provisions for off-street parking.
So the recently adopted master plan discusses parking from a variety of vantage points. It does have the, it does have an action to reduce or eliminate parking requirements citywide or on an area, area by area basis. It also references that the overall parking requirements should be left to the market to decide in terms of the amount of privately provided, which is supplemented by public parking, including parking on the street. And staff is of the belief that this topic needs to be further researched, discussed, and analyzed prior to the Planning Commission making any recommendations to the City Commission to, to change the ordinance requirements with regard to off-street parking. So minimum off-street parking standards are undoubtedly going to be a topic as we move forward with the creation of a new zoning ordinance, but in advance of that commencement, it's appropriate for the Planning Commission to openly study and discuss these parking requirements and what they mean. So this presentation tonight provides a brief history of the parking, off-street parking requirements that are identified in the zoning ordinance. It also refreshes prior conversations and actions that the Planning Commission has taken with regard to parking requirements with regard specifically to multifamily developments, and then some limited commercial uses as well. So lastly, it's going to introduce some new data and statistics regarding some existing commercial uses and corridors in the city. So it's not staff's intent to initiate any ordinance amendments prior to creating a new zoning ordinance. That's not our intent with this memorandum or this discussion tonight. But we do, we do not want to advocate for the elimination or reduction or increase or modifications to those standards in advance of, of the zoning ordinance rewrite, but we do want to refresh your memory with regard to history, conditions, and trends. So we'll go through a brief history of the, of off-street parking requirements in the zoning ordinance. The first version of the city's zoning ordinance was adopted in 1931, and as you might guess, there were no off-street parking requirements for any of the uses in the original zoning ordinance. Planning Commission in 1947 saw that automobiles were becoming more prevalent, and so they commissioned hiring a consultant in order to help study what that meant and to come up with possible off-street parking requirements for new uses or new redevelopments in the city. So that was a multi-year study. It took very long time, and in the spring of 1953, the City Commission considered zoning ordinance tax amendments for different uses and their corresponding required minimum off-street parking spaces. The one thing that in coming and doing this research, coming across that I found the most interesting is that the proposed amendments exempt. exempted some land uses from providing, the need to provide off-street parking. And we'll take a look at a map on the, on the screen, but it essentially created an overlay district. And that overlay district was defined as developed business area. There were several different areas, we'll just bring up the map. On the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see what they defined as developed, again, existing developed business area in 1953. There were several areas that they considered. The red is what was referred to as the central business zoning, the central business district at the time. You'll see it's different from the existing boundaries of the central business zoning district in that it extends much further north on 11 Mile, north of 11 Mile on Main Street. It also, the original proposal also included all of the properties on East 11 Mile Road from downtown, from downtown area extending out to Campbell Road. And then there were some limited areas along Woodward Avenue near Main Street, as well as 10 Mile Road, which did not have the freeway at the time, which was just 10 Mile Road. After much conversation, they did pare that area down to what you see on the right-hand side of the screen. And that is the central business district at the time, what it was referred to as. And so it, the ordinance provisions that took effect in 1953 exempted any uses in that red shaded area, and that's a very general outline, from providing existing off-street parking. The 1953 zoning ordinance included a very interesting provision that still actually exists in a modified version today. And I'm gonna go ahead and read it. This, again, is from 1953. "If and when public need requires, the city commission may establish publicly owned off-street parking facilities, which may be financed wholly or in part by special assessment on the district benefiting such facilities. In case a special assessment district is created for such purpose, the city commission may waive in whole or in part the requirement for private off-street parking facilities in connection with the occupancy or use of a building within the special assessed district." So to the best of staff's knowledge, there's never been a special assessment district created in order for the city to create off-street parking and utilize it for this purpose. But that, that provision, along with, and again, I'm gonna point back to the map, the, the one that was adopted on the right-hand side of the screen, was an absolute clear indication that the people that created the first off-street parking requirements in 1953 recognized that the city has had an existing urban fabric and that by requiring uses in those areas to, to now provide parking would break that urban fabric. So it says that, again, any of the uses, new uses or changes of uses or new developments in that red area did not need to provide off-street parking. So it was a clear recognition that the off-street parking requirements that they were creating could negatively affect the, the fabric of that area. On the screen, you'll see a map that shows the existing outline of the central business zoning district. And it, it exempts certain uses from providing off-street parking. Uses like residential, hotels, religious institutions, schools, all are required to provide off-street parking in this red shaded area, the central business zoning district. I will note that if you look on a map and you quantify it, those uses take up a substantial amount of the land area within this central business zoning district. So something to consider. In 1953, the parking standards were set as shown in the table on the screen. The table on the screen identifies notable uses, that initial off-street parking requirement outside of the central business zoning district, in comparison to the existing parking requirements that are identified in the zoning ordinance. So we'll just highlight a few of those uses. One, two, and even multiple family dwellings back in 1953 were required to provide one off-street parking space per each dwelling. We now require two. The one exception being in the central business zoning district, multi, multiple family dwellings need to only provide one and a half parking spaces per unit. So religious institutions, some of the uses include professional office, not much different than today. Medical offices, not much different than today. Retail was unique. Retail said if you're 1,500 square foot or less, you need to provide any parking. Anything above 1,500 square feet, you needed to provide one parking space for 250 square feet. That's when it kicked in to requiring, to provide off-street parking. Today, we require one parking space for 250 square feet of usable floor area regardless of the square footage of your retail business. As noted, in 1953, there was a requirement to provide one off-street parking spaces for single-family homes, two-family homes, and any type of multifamily dwelling. In 1961, there were some text amendments that increased the ratio of off-street parking, getting into some convoluted formulas with regard to the number of parking spaces that are required for each unit. Staff quickly realized that it was difficult to administer these provisions. And then in 1963, the ordinance was amended to increase the required number of off-street parking spaces for multifamily dwellings outside of the central business zoning district. Kind of comical to look back through the minutes and to realize that at that time in 1963, the planning commission minutes note that the planning director states, this probably would be the most stringent requirement in the state of Michigan to require one and a half spaces per one-bedroom dwelling and two spaces for two or more bedrooms. In 1967, there were some amendments to the zoning ordinance to require that multifamily dwellings, hotels and motels in the central business districts start to provide their own off-street parking spaces. In 1972, the city commission adopted text amendments to increase the required off-street parkings for multifamily dwellings from two spaces per unit with one bedrooms to two and a half spaces for units with two or more bedrooms. Again, those are, those can get to be complicated formulas. And then what happens if someone changes an apartment or converts one bedroom to another use other than a bedroom? So the standard for two parking spaces per dwelling regardless of the number of bedrooms, that was established in 1986, so quite a few years later. In 2019, the planning commission adopted a motion to direct staff to prepare a report for potential zoning ordinance text amendments. And they were with regard to density, off-street parking, and some other standards for multifamily developments. And that was done with the potential to decrease the number of planned unit development and conditional rezoning applications regarding multiple family developments that were coming in front of you. In August of 2019, the planning commission met and were, you were provided with an analysis. Staff analyzed every single multifamily project in the, in the entire city. We broke it out in two portions. Developments that were created prior to 2002 and projects developed after 2002. And the analysis concluded that 78% of all the multifamily housing built in Raleigh prior to 2002 couldn't meet the parking standards that we have today of two parking spaces per unit or dwelling. And that 28% of all the multifamily housing built since 2002 received a waiver or a variance to provide fewer than two parking spaces. Of the 222 sites that are multifamily built prior to 20, 2002, 61% had fewer than one and a half parking spaces per unit. And so staff recommended some text amendments to the zoning ordinance and reducing the minimum off-street parking requirements. And in 2022, the planning, excuse me, 2020, the planning, after the planning commission's input, we provided an additional memo and suggested that parking for multifamily be reduced to, from two spaces to 1.3 spaces for dwellings regardless of the zoning district they were in. There were some revisions made based on the planning commission's comments. Some additional, an additional memo was prepared for the planning commission. Unfortunately, that was in the spring of 2020, and the onset of COVID-19 really delayed a lot of the momentum with any potential amendment to the text. Planning commission held a joint meeting just like you did earlier today back in September, with the zoning board appeals back in September of 2020. And one of the topics that were, that was discussed was off-street parking for multifamily, as well as properties along Woodward Avenue. After that joint meeting, the planning commission conversed on which items could be dealt with during the review of the master plan versus those that should be subject to community engagement prior to a new master plan. And in 2021, the topic of reducing park, off-street parking for multifamily was elevated to an importance prior to the commencement of the master plan. So again, moving forward with a recommended change to the city commission prior to starting the master plan. So you held a, a public hearing regarding that text amendment in August of 2021, and there was no action taken at that meeting. So there was no motion adopted or no recommendation moved forward to the city commission. Yet at that exact same meeting, you did recognize that the master plan was no, the, no longer applicable to what was occurring in the city and how the city wanted to move forward. So at that August 2021 meeting, you did adopt a motion to direct staff to start the process to, to develop a new master plan. Fast forward a few years to today, and staff thought it was important to provide you with a table that identifies some more recently approved multifamily developments. And we can take a look in, at the screen, I'll zoom in. It's gonna identify different projects that have come in front of you. Site address, number of dwellings, parking spaces that are provided, what that equates to in terms of a ratio. And then the far right column identifies whether they were granted a variance from the zoning board appeals, or whether they went through some exception to the normal approval process, like they requested a planned unit development to rezone the property with a development agreement, or they came in front of you and asked for a conditional rezoning. So you'll see there's a wide swing in the number of parking spaces provided for different residential developments. Anything ranging from the one exception that is no parking, and that's in the, in the central business zoning district, to all the way ranging up to 1.75. So again, these were all, especially with the conditional rezoning requests and the planned unit development requests, these are all projects that developers are bringing to you or have brought to you to identify that they firmly believe that their investment doesn't constitute the need for two parking spaces per unit. So they were going out on a limb with their own money and risk and, and coming to you and indicating that they did not need to provide two parking spaces per unit. And their research and confidence in their investment lived up to that. In 2012, there was a master plan amendment. Shortly after that, in 2020, excuse me, 2013, there were some changes to the zoning ordinance regarding off-street parking. Those weren't really transformative, they were rather minor in nature. And so what we wanted to do is to look at, staff took the liberty of looking at different commercial corridors in the city. So again, not the central business zoning district, because that, most of the uses are not required to provide off-street parking, but looking at many of the commercial corridors in the city, analyzing those uses, determining how many parking spaces they have and how many parking spaces they're required to have, to give you an indication to staff, to give an indication in the public to be aware of what are our ordinance requirements mean in terms of people complying with it today or not complying. So we'll show on the screen some interesting tables. There's seven commercial corridors that we looked at. We note those corridors, the number of properties on those corridors, and you'll see a compliant and a non-compliant column. So we'll take the first one as an example. 11 Mile Road, all of 11 Mile, west and east. There are 99 commercial properties outside of the central business zoning district. Forty-six and a half percent of those meet today's parking requirements for their identified uses, and 53.5% are unable to meet the parking requirements. So you can go down the list. In total, the majority of uses of the 516 properties on those seven corridors, the majority of them do not meet today's, they're not compliant with today's off-street parking requirements. We took a look at it from another perspective of terms of the properties and when the structure on that property was built. So you'll see we broke it into some different cohorts, and a very limited number of those brackets actually comply with providing parking per their requirement. They tend to be rather new developments, as you might imagine. And then lastly, we've provided a comprehensive list of all of those seven corridors. We looked at all of the uses on those corridors and determine the total square footage of particular types of uses, and whether those uses are providing a compliant number of parking spaces or not. So it's food for thought. Again, it's not staff's initiative to, staff is not advocating for changing parking standards in advance of creating a new zoning ordinance, but we want to make you aware of the statistics and the public aware of the current circumstances and trends. We may bring to you in the future some, some other memorandums with regard to off-street parking, but this is, I believe, an excellent foundation for you as well as the public and any consultant that we do hire, to give them an understanding of where we've been, where we're at, trends that you're seeing, and what they can do to assist us to make it logical for creating a new zoning ordinance.
All right, I have a quick question. Is the chart on page 10, is that the same 564 properties?
The one on the screen.
See, see how both of those charts have the same 564 properties broken up in different ways? Is page 10 also the same 564 properties?
Yes.
Okay. So those are the corridors. Okay, are there questions for Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Murphy, great presentation, great read, and great summary. I just want to make sure I fully understand this in a simpleton's point of view. So over the course of time, you know, parking has always been a discussion, it's always been a guess. You know, what should we do in order to prevent spillage into other areas and create problems, let's say, in other adjoining properties, neighborhoods, et cetera. We had a, in 1961, our planning director at the time said, you are gonna have the most stringent parking requirements of any other community in Michigan, you know, the highest ratios.
With regard to multiple family developments.
With regard to multiple family dwellings, okay. What we've seen since then and over this time is that we've had a number of developments get built, a number of different types of uses get built. And what I see here in these charts, whether it's by, by corridor, by year, or by use, notwithstanding a few of the Office Medical Without Patient Facility 1, 100%, but when I look at this, I see, quite frankly, you know, what's happening in our community, the way we've been living is not anywhere close. We've been offering variances, we've negotiated PUDs, we've done whatever, because when someone gets in front of us, they make their case over the last 70 years, that I don't need all of this parking. I just need this to make it work. And as mayor, with the exception of a few things here and there, I don't see a general clamoring in any of these corridors where people are saying, oh my gosh, everything is underparked and, and whatnot. We haven't got all of these complaints that the standard of 1961 would have suggested we would get if they fast-forwarded to today and saw this data. So if I'm getting this straight, I'm looking at data that says that according to the standard, we're woefully underparked, but we're not hearing the complaints or seeing the symptoms, symptoms of being woefully underparked.
If things are, and people that live in, deeper into single-family residential, adjacent single-family residential neighborhoods have concerns over a large number of vehicles parking on the street that are preventing them from backing out of their, there, there are, as you know, the remedy is to ask for permit parking only. So oftentimes, that is, that is a solution, and that can certainly be offered as an analysis to determine where permit parking currently exists. And it to, maybe to, in the future, if you decide you want to reduce the requirement for off-street parking in order to prevent that, we'll call it spillover, as a... that, we'll call it spillover, as a very viable solution to prevent that.
Well, and that's actually another, I think, interesting layer for this analysis is where have we, and I don't know how hard it is to pull up, where have we approved? Because I know, like I said, you can always find an exception, right? I've been here, and we've solved some of the issues. We had a church once that, you know, on Sundays was just taking off, you know, and people were parking in the neighborhoods, and we went to the permit parking solution. We had an issue up on Woodward with one of the restaurants that opened up, but way more popular than it had ever thought, and, you know, and then sometimes, you know, the ratios are off because the type of business, it may be a restaurant, but it, well, kind of, like, you know, you can't ever get it perfect. But it seems like it's really the exception. When I look at the millions of square feet that have been developed, you know, we've handled the exceptions, but it might be interesting to know, like, were there ever problems and how many times permit parking had to be issued to remedy the situation? And is that a important factor to look at in terms of balancing the ratios?
It's definitely something that can be researched.
But overall, if I understand what the report is conveying is that, I mean, we have a standard and nothing is really complying to that standard, and especially some of the newer developments where they've made their cases, we haven't seen. I know in 11 Mile, the Amber Place went up and everybody was like, oh my gosh, the parking ratio. I drive by that every single day, it's right near my neighborhood. I see spots empty all the time. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's a, that's an interesting anecdote that the mayor just brought up, because my daughter lives in those apartments, so I go past her all the time, and often I'm there early at seven o'clock in the morning, or I'm there at seven o'clock at night, and you're absolutely right. Rembrandt, I usually come down Rembrandt, and there's no cars parked, spillover cars, but that's anecdotal, okay? That's an anecdotal. What we were presenting here is we, here's the data that you, you put together. You put together what exists currently, what and how it evolved, both interesting. You also mentioned something that we get, data that we get here at this, in this room all the time, is developers come in, ready to take risks with a certain parking ratio. So that definitely is data, and then they build, and then they don't go bankrupt, so that's data. What I'm interested in, what other data is available to planners and zoners, and what do they use other than what you've got here?
You had noted parking occupancy data. Some of that may be, that's something that we may consider doing, is hiring a firm to help go out and, and check. The easy one with multifamily developments is they gotta go out at three o'clock in the morning and check numerous sites on a regular basis or every other month for four months and give you data to know if you're living in a multifamily unit, you're going to be, most people are going to be home at three o'clock in the morning because they'll be sleeping. So it's easy to go and drive by the site and see how many empty spaces there are and compare that to the statistics that we have for that particular site, say, how many units, dwellings do they have there? How many parking spaces do they currently provide? How many are required to provide, and what's the vacancy at 3:00 AM for whatever defined time? You can do the same exact thing for restaurants on a Friday or Saturday night if that's their peak hour. Medical uses on Monday at nine, between nine and 2:00 PM. There are certain uses, you know where their peak demands are, and you can hire a firm to tailor to those timeframes with those particular uses to give you real-world data.
That sounds expensive to do that on the ground. It also probably is expensive to do it with drones, but I think they probably do.
We haven't gotten to the point where we've requested price quotes yet.
Okay. When I went to the Michigan Planning Convention there a couple of years ago, that was one of the things they had, is they said they're firms that do what they call big data, and they, they take pictures from the air, multiple pictures, and they get the, that sounded expensive too. But anyways, I'm sure we'll discuss more.
Just one more quick question. In the data, we often have approved things with offsetting uses, so like a strip mall that has an eye doctor and then our, you know, a restaurant. How is that conveyed in this data? To say like, maybe, yeah, it's not compliant, but, you know, overall, because during the day, nobody's eating at the restaurant, I don't know.
I think it's a number of spaces, not the use.
Well, there's, this data. No, there's use down here where it says like, fitness center, funeral home, you know what I mean? So it could be non-compliant, but it could be adjacent to another use, and they're just offsetting by the time of day. You know what I mean? I know we've actually considered that up here, and I know the zoning board considers that. Is that, how is that conveyed in these uses?
It's not, not at all.
Okay.
No, no. There's no analysis of cross-use of parking or what's called in the ordinance, shared parking. We have some requirements in the zoning ordinance for shared parking that are pretty stringent. Those requirements actually require an affidavit that's filed at the county, so it really legally ties someone's hands, other than what typically happens is it's a handshake agreement or an informal or something that's done on a very temporary basis that's extended or courtesy, as you noted. Some uses next to others have peak demands, and they share, have been afloat.
Does Mr. Granatina have any comments about the cost of over-parking?
In, in, I guess in what context?
We want to have adequate parking, but we don't want to have over-parking because there's a cost to that, is there not?
Well, yes, certainly. I think in any construction project, whoever's bringing it forward is going to.
I mean, a cost environmentally, aesthetically, space usage-wise, is a bunch of impervious surface that you're not using.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's many different roads you can go down, no pun intended, to talk about how negative effects of over-parking are something we want to stay away from. But I think it all is centered on the, the project that's going to come forward is, is not going to come forward if it's not economically viable. So if reducing the parking that's being offered is going to make the project, you know, unbuildable by economic standards, that's just, that's not what's going to come forward. From our perspective, I think why we really want to consider reduction in parking is for many of the reasons that you stated. We certainly want the products to be economically viable, but not incentivizing or giving relief to, or making it okay for less parking has a whole host of ancillary benefits. I think that's what you've been referring to.
Yeah. Because there's a sustainability, environmental aspect to having a bunch of parking lots that are unused.
Yep.
Anyways, that's for further discussion, I suppose. Anything else? Any other comments from, what about our economic?
I just, I just have one more. You know, I spent a lot of time at, not a lot of time, but I had a major product category that dealt exactly with parking for a long time, and we studied large metropolitan areas, and we studied communities like ours. And, you know, there is evolving technology as it relates to parking, there is ride-sharing, there are behavioral changes. But when you look at the big developers, I mean, cities like Los Angeles in order to attract additional development, and cities like Charlotte are looking at zero parking minimums in their downtowns for, for everything, including residential. And there's reasons for that. We're not Charlotte, we're not Los Angeles. But what I can tell you in my experience is that, you know, the money that you, that, so working, let's say, on a, on a parking project and, you know, the developer wants to build a big building and put the technology, and if that developer can save $115,000 a parking spot, this is more inside a building, they're going to put that money into the building. So they're going to put it into environmental elements into the building, they're going to put it into aesthetics, they're going to put it into making the buildings more energy-efficient, and they're going to put it into, you know, making it economically feasible and actually having lower rents to be more competitive in certain cases. So what I've seen is that this, what we're seeing here with this data is not dissimilar to what other cities, big and small, are seeing, and some are taking really drastic actions, and some are just doing slight modifications. The challenge I see that we all have is we're trying to define the world in 20 certain constellations, either, and, you know, by uses or where it's at. The challenge is, is that, like when we see drive-throughs, most of them work, Starbucks does not. So I think we have to always think about, you know, we don't want to do extra work and, and have to always approve lower amounts, but at the same time, there is the law of unintended consequences. And you're never going to be able to take every constellation yesterday, today, or whatever, and say, I'm going to find the perfect ratio. Some are going to be underparked, some are going to be overparked. But I can promise you, the people spending millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars are really looking at that data and information, because if you don't have parking spots, then you're, you have too few parking spots, you're not going to have a good business model. If you have too many, you're not going to have a good business model. So the market does have a lot to say, I think, in this conversation.
Mr. Granatina?
So just to carry on the point the mayor was making for a second. Our hope would be that a developer, builder would take cost savings from parking that's not required and put it into the building. But if it's just a cost shift, then I think what we have to do is maybe talk about how we look at our parking ratios that we're establishing. We're still going to have projects that come forward that are asking for a reduction to that even, that's just sort of the natural way of things. But what I think we need to look at is if, if what we hope for is that those dollars are then put back into the building, into better aesthetics, better performance, whatever it may be, how do we then incentivize that? Whether it's through a community benefits program or something along those lines, we need to carefully analyze what parking ratios we think make sense with the understanding that not every project will fit into that. And so how do we create additional levers that we, as a community, can still get things that are important to us in exchange for what the private developer is saying, I don't need these things, but you're telling me I need them, after we've established some new rules? I think we, again, it's a cost shift thing, we hope that they would take those dollars, put it into a better building, but I think if we can maybe create something where if they're really coming to us after new standards and saying we still need more relief, how do we leverage that into other benefits for the community?
Yeah, I'm all for that.
All right. Any other comments? All right. There's no decision-making here, this was an educational exercise.
Yes, and we have other topics geared up for you for the future.
All right. All right. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the non-action item.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to open up for any comment on this item?
Sure. Does anybody in the public want to speak on the parking study that we just heard? All right. Saying none, I'll close the, close that, and we'll go on to the non-action items.
It's just a notice from the city of Southfield that there is a comment period provided for your, if you have any comments that you want to provide to them with regard to their plan, you're welcome to pass those along to us, and we'll send them their way.
All right. And that, just for the record, that's, is that on their website? Is it where we find it there? It says strategic plan there, but there's also a master plan?
Yes, the website.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. We are out of agenda items. Is there anything that any commissioners or staff or council would like to comment on, put on the record before we make a motion to adjourn? All right. Saying none, is there a motion to adjourn? There's only three of you.
I will move to adjourn.
Second by the mayor. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
You ready? Yeah, sorry, I took a little longer, buddy.
It's okay. I'm just going to sit in the chair.